Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
Hey, welcome everyone. Again, my name is Mayor Mike Peterson. This is the City of Cottonwood Heights. It's Tuesday, December 1st. It's 7:01 PM and this is our business meeting for the first meeting in December. And to begin the meeting, I need to read a determination, which justifies why we're meeting virtually. And that determination states, pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2074, the city's mayor as the Chair of the City Council hereby determines that conducting a meeting of the City Council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitute a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Therefore, we're doing this virtually. We'll now begin with a pledge of allegiance. And I'd ask Scott Bracken, would you please lead us in that pledge?
Yes, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Bracken, for leading us in the pledge. Following our agenda, the next item is citizen comments. We encourage any citizen who would like to give us some comments or feedback. This is a good time to do it. If you're here to comment regarding the Ferguson parking permit, that comes later on in the agenda when we have our public hearing. This is for citizen comments not related to that. And we would encourage you to keep to the three-minute time limit. If you're an individual, if you represent a group, please let us know. We'll give a little bit longer time. We also ask to please not include any personal attacks to maintain civility. And we respect everyone's comments. With that introduction to two citizen comments, Paula, do you have somebody who would like to speak?
Not yet, Mayor. No one is raising their hands.
Okay, we'll wait just a minute for someone to raise their hand before moving to the public hearing. And I imagine many of those who want to speak tonight are regarding that issue. Again, is there anyone that's on our Zoom meeting who would like to speak in the citizen comments?
Mayor, I have Kim and Jim Stojak.
Okay, Kim or Jim, whomever.
Good evening. I just have a question. We saw the guys repaving the street on top of the world, doing slurry sell and repaving. And once again, our cul-de-sac was left out of it. It's not the first time that this has happened. My husband walked out and talked to the guy that was driving the truck and doing the repaving of the roads in our neighborhood, minus ours. And he said our cul-de-sac was Xed off the map. We called and tried to get ahold of Tim Tingey, but he was out. I'm sure he was teaching his ethics class up at the U. And then they put us over to a voicemail of Eric. And we left a message and we have had no phone call returns.
Well, I promise you that some of will be back in contact with you within 24 hours. We apologize for any miscommunication. There's a five-year plan. It is outlined as far as resurfacing roads. I don't think we're doing any repaving, but we're doing the crack seal and the other things like that. But we will have someone get back to you within 24 hours. If not, call me personally and we'll find out where it's at. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else, Paula, who would like to speak?
No, sir. I don't see anyone.
Okay, we'll just wait just a second because sometimes there are some challenges getting the hand raised. Okay. We'll close the citizen comment period and we'll now move to item 4.0, which is the public hearing regarding Ferguson Canyon parking overflow and into the streets and things like that. So Mike Johnson, our Community Economic Development Director, if you'll introduce the subject before we open it up to the public to comment on the permit application.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This was a petition submitted by a resident in the proposed area to expand the existing permit parking area that exists up by the Ferguson Canyon Trailhead. This map here is turned sideways. So for those watching, north is to the right. Wasatch Boulevard is on the top of the screen. The red area shown is the existing permit parking area, along with some signs that are no parking closer down to Wasatch Boulevard on Prospector. The orange area shown is the proposed expanded area submitted in the petition by the resident. I believe it includes 19 properties, 15 of which signed a petition. The ordinance requires at least 51% of owners, of affected owners, to sign the petition before it's considered by the council. And 15 out of 19 is 79%, so meets the criteria for being put in front of the council for consideration. And the summary here is all from the petition that was submitted by the resident. The expansion would be proposed to extend southward on Prospector Drive to Honeywood Cove. The purpose is to mitigate on-street parking issues caused by area visitors on days with heavy trail usage utilizing the Ferguson Canyon Trail. The rationale for the area proposed is that the expanded area would result in permit parking for about a third of a mile from Ferguson Canyon Trailhead down Prospector, which is the same distance as the trailhead to the overflow parking area just off of Wasatch Boulevard. The petition includes a number of photos to demonstrate the concerns that are experienced, especially on heavy trail use days. And it's just on-street parking, you know, at times individuals on private property. There is a current overflow area down below. That lot is scheduled for improvement into a full, fully improved parking lot later next summer, summer of 2021. So that will be expanded even further than it already is. And we'll be able to be utilized as a primary parking lot for trail usage there. I won't read through all of these, but this was presented at the last meeting. Staff's findings are that the petition and the rationale behind the petition generally comply with the required findings in the ordinance. So, so given an objective analysis, this petition meets the general criteria for, for parking permit areas being issued by the City Council. As was stated, the city's police department has some concerns and expressed their position of opposition to the petition. The rationale is listed there, numerous different issues were expressed there. They are available on the petition and the staff report that should be online. And then just to provide some, some local precedence, there are other cities in the area that have existing permit parking ordinances around trailheads. As I mentioned, there's an existing permit parking area near this trailhead, so it's not brand new. But we did look into what other cities do and four of the cities we surveyed, not many have actual permit parking ordinances to begin with, but four of those cities that do have permit parking areas around trailheads. This was laid out as next steps two weeks ago would be to provide public notice and hold a hearing. And then the council is required to make a final decision within 30 days of that hearing. We sent notices, we mailed notices to property owners within the affected area as well as 500 feet beyond the area in all directions. We posted three public notice signs on the street in the area as well. And then published the petition information on the city website and also published notice in local newspapers. So tonight is the public hearing. The council has, we've received numerous written comments via email. The ones I've received prior to 12 o'clock noon today have been sent to the council. Those that came in afternoon will be sent to the council right away tomorrow morning before any considerations taken on this. And then just by ordinance, the council decision will be required at the next meeting on December 15. And so that's what I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments or questions of Mike before we begin the public hearing? I thank you and I appreciate the information, Mike. I know we've had an update today and went through this in some detail in a previous meeting and some of us on the council visited the sites during the peak times last summer. So we're sensitive and aware of the challenges that impact our neighborhood. Paula, anyone who would like to speak regarding the Ferguson parking permit?
I have David Hancock.
Mr. Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, David Hancock. I actually live in, they have a small portion of Quicksilver that is part of the permitted parking. I've lived here since 1992. I'm an attorney, resident property owner in Quicksilver Drive. And my address is 7723 Quicksilver Drive. While, while we support the application for on-street parking and we understand what they've been going through, we have serious concerns about the existing problems we have on our own street with parking and cars on Quicksilver. And if, if Mike, he can share with you the map, if you don't recall, Quicksilver is the one that's just right around the corner from Ferguson Canyon Trailhead. We're a flat street, very narrow street. In particular, we are concerned is that we just move Prospector Drive on-street parking to Quicksilver Drive would be the only remaining street near the trailhead that would be open to public parking. And for some reason, we've been left out completely off the list of streets for consideration for on-street parking. I understand this is a petition, but we were not as a street, including the original proposed map and plan, just a few homes of which is actually one of my homes that has permit parking out in front of it. Our street is extremely narrow and is not a reasonable location for public parking, especially on both sides of the street. We have vehicles parked on both sides of the street due to visitors to Ferguson Canyon, other recreational activities, such as the planned Bonneville Shoreline Trail. We'll not be able to, we'll not be able to drive safely on our street. For example, our street is so narrow that we only have a sidewalk on the west side of the street. Our street is too narrow for a sidewalk on the east side of the street. We already have problems with the trailhead visitors parking on Quicksilver Drive. In fact, we regularly have visitors who get lost trying to find Ferguson Canyon on a daily basis. We've had, we've had to redirect them to park. Pardon me?
Go ahead, David.
We've had to redirect them to parking access to Timberline Drive where the existing parking is. There's no sign that's in front of our street on Prospector that implies the trailhead is up our street farther, about 200 feet ahead on Timberline Drive. And only do we get cars parked on our streets for the trailhead. They, they often get confused and we get angry visitors racing back and forth up and down our street trying to find the correct location. We also regularly get groups and couples, this is no joke, this really actually happens, arguing about which street is the right location. I mean, it sounds odd, but it's a regular occurrence. Some visitors simply park on our street and then trespass across private property at the end of Quicksilver to take a shortcut up the hill at the end of Quicksilver rather than walking back the correct route to access the trailhead. So we're concerned with that, with the increased traffic and parking for the trailhead that will continue to see increased vehicle traffic and parking on Quicksilver Drive. As such, we request that the on-street parking permit be increased to include all of Quicksilver Drive. We discussed this matter with all of our neighbors on Quicksilver Drive and the unanimous support are this change for Quicksilver Drive. In fact, we've only been unable to contact one neighbor during this entire holiday week. We didn't have much notice about this because most of our street was not included in the notices, I understand. And that's according to your ordinance and your laws. But it does impact our street and we didn't have a sign on our street and we didn't also receive, most neighbors did not receive any written notice and we're completely unaware of this change. So we're concerned that the change would permit to permit parking on Prospector will only increase the existing parking problem we have on Quicksilver Drive. Again, we're completely empathetic with what is going on on Prospector and support their efforts. But only as it relates to getting us permit, on-street permit parking on Quicksilver as well. We're the closest next street that's convenient for visitors using the trailhead. And we already get spillover parking from the trailhead as it is. Our concern is we'll see the same problems we currently experience, but it'll just be larger. We'll get increased animal waste, discarded garbage on our street and properties, vehicles speeding up and down our road. It's a long, straight shot and people really do drive fast trying to find the right trailhead road. And then vehicles blocking both sides of our street would make it impassable. Also, we have extremely steep driveways on the east side of our street. It would be very difficult for people to back out of the driveway and not hit a vehicle parked on the adjoining part. And, and again, this is a serious issue during the winter here, not just during the, not just during the, the regular part of the year, just trying to get in and out of your driveway on these steep roads to try and access your own road. In fact, the Cottonwood Heights Police Department, they commented that this, that that they would have additional problems trying to address people parking. I, I just kind of respectfully disagree with that and their cursory opinion that would divert city resources to address unlawful parking. My home is one of only a few homes on the south end of Quicksilver Drive that's had on-street parking for many years. We haven't had to call the police a single time for unpermitted parking. To be clear, once the signs go up, no one really parks illegally in our area. Enforcement's pretty much a non-issue once the signs go up. For the, for even for the most obtuse visitors who park directly in violation of the sign areas, they still notice the signs and eventually they'll, they'll move. And our concern is if without the signs, they're just going to move on to Quicksilver and away from Prospector and every other location. It's, it really is surprising that even if you put the overflow parking down below, which I understand is a long-term plan, people just aren't willing to walk an extra 400 yards or 200 yards to get to the trailhead. They'll park in the most convenient location, which is us. Finally, with regard to your existing on-street parking permit program, I would like the city to consider going back in part to the original program that allows certain number of rearview mirror hangers for visitors and service providers who come to access our homes. When I told my neighbor across the street that her, her tag would no longer be usable for her, for her cars that park in front of her house, she was very surprised. As you know, we had to pay for these tags several years ago. And it's just simply impractical to have to go to the city every time a single visitor or service provider needs to park in front of our street or in front of our property, especially with those with really steep driveways that are inaccessible to most vehicles, inaccessible to service providers. And there's no way to obtain a permit in a timely manner for the last-minute visitors or emergency service providers when the city isn't open on weekends, holidays, let alone 24/7. We just have no way to predict these in advance when these invitees arrive. So I think the prior hanger system actually worked extremely well for the on-street permitting parking. And again, they were paid for by us and we're happy to pay for them again. Also, for homes on the east side, as I said, we just have no way to navigate our driveways with most of our visitors and it's nearly impossible during the winter unless you're experienced navigating your own driveway. So those are my comments. For these reasons, we request that Quicksilver Drive will also be changed on-street parking. And with that, we would support the Prospector Drive request, but we just, we don't want to do that and just have it moved to our area.
All right, David. Thank you for your well-thought-out comments and duly noted and we'll, we'll we have some comments regarding processes here in a minute, but, but thank you. Well-thought-out comments. Paula, who's next?
Katie Brown.
Edie, before you speak, let me just remind the audience, and I should have done this. I know I, I talked with our public comment period that we allow each participant three minutes and to to state your opinion and we'll try to adhere to that on the public hearing as well, but don't want to cut anybody off. But if you can keep your comments close to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Katie, go ahead.
Thank you for allowing this hearing. My name is Katie Brown. I'm a resident in District 4. I live at 7068 South, 2930 East. Most two years moved here for the trails to be close. But I have a couple dogs, so I enjoy Ferguson Canyon quite a bit. My concern with, not opposed to the permit parking system, my, and this has already been brought up a couple of times, is the, there seems to just not be an awareness that there is an overflow parking. I've used the overflow parking many times because I know it's there, but it's not a very developed area and happy to, happy to know that it's going to be more developed. But what are we doing as far as signage to direct people to that parking lot? And what are we doing to, once they're in the parking lot in the overflow, to direct people and make it a, to facilitate them towards the trailhead and not get lost? Like our previous commenter said, he has people getting lost on the street all the time. So what I, my concern is, is that, that we make sure that we are, we are making it easy for people to access the, to access the trail from, from that overflow parking lot, especially as it's being developed. So I, my, my concern is that there just really isn't enough signage and signage is, is so important when, when, when we have these outdoor, when you're trying to find a trailhead, I should say. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Valid, valid point. And obviously signage and wayfinding needs to be a piece that we add into the proposed parking that's coming. Thank you. Paula, who's next?
C Powers.
Mr. Powers, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Powers. Mr. Powers, can you hear me? Mr. Powers, you're muted, it looks like. See if you unmute your microphone and go ahead and speak. There. Can you hear us? Paula, we'll need to go to the next person and hopefully Mr. Powers can figure out how to get connected to us.
I don't have anyone else right now. Oh, I have Anna McNamara.
Anna, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I would like to echo the concerns of the previous speaker. This, this really is an issue related to fiscal responsibility and fair use for our community. A really easy thing that we can do is again, put up those signs directing people where to go. And it will cost a lot less than asking our officers to enforce an enormous area of permits. Really, I mean, when, when we're looking at public roads, we need to allow the public to access public roads. And there are pros and cons of living next to one of the busiest trails in Salt Lake County. Ferguson attracts trail users from all over and tons of different types of trail users, climbers, families, serious hikers, and of course, those wonderful people with their pups. We need to make sure that we remain open and inviting. It's good for business. This is similar to what we see at the beaches. If you've ever been to the beach, you know that the neighborhoods near the beach are covered with people coming to enjoy their use of that location. Ferguson is very, very similar. Asking people to pay additional money in addition to their tax dollars, in addition to the things that they're purchasing when they come from other cities into Cottonwood Heights. It's not neighborly, it's not inviting. One of the things that I noticed in the presentation was the picture of the people who were supposedly trespassing. They were on a public sidewalk on a public road. And the key word there is public. We need to be inviting. We need to be neighborly. And if there are other issues that arise, then maybe we need to separate the zoning ordinance issues from the noise and disturbance-related issues. These are two separate issues. Our city just doesn't have money right now to go forward and repave a brand-new overflow location, but we do have the money to put in signs. And that seems like an easy solution that would really help all trail users. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
Sorry, half the microphones. I have, I'm going to try C Powers again.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, I'm not a Mr. Powers.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, yeah, that's my.
I too live on Quicksilver Drive and I, I respect the previous speaker's comments and her filter for what is going on with parking. I love Ferguson Canyon. My family's grown up in this house. I've lived in this house on Quicksilver Drive for 36 years. So I am well aware of the highly traveled spaces. I also am well aware of the need for limiting the parking. And if, if we limit the parking on this street, I, I live here now with my daughter, my son-in-law and three small children. I don't, they, we have two front yards. One is down on Prospector Drive and one is up on Quicksilver because ours is, is flanked by both streets. The children are often in the backyard and I'm more worried about their well-being than a car parking on my street, but I'd still like to be able to choose who parks in front of my house with a sticker. So I am with Dave Hancock, was, he was the first speaker. I wrote a letter and I believe Mike Johnson has it, C Powers and Sidney Shaw. We live in this house and we've lived here forever and ever. And I love to hike and I understand loving to hike and I understand the need for parking. I was speaker for the limiting of the parking below my house, but I figure that's going to go ahead and that's sufficient. Once we get that parking lot done, we will still have those walkers that will walk up Prospector Drive to get to Ferguson, but I don't think they need to park on Quicksilver Drive. And that is my comment. I would like to piggyback on the petition for parking stickers or whatever it takes for Quicksilver Drive. And thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. We appreciate your comments and duly noted. Paula, who's next?
I have Tim Hallback.
Tim, we missed you. Where you been?
I was out to Sycor for a couple of weeks again. How's everybody doing? Everybody looks healthy there. I would just have one suggestion on all this kind of stuff. Because I've been up there a couple of times and I miss one of the turns and the next thing you know, you're wandering around and people get frustrated and that's when they start driving fast. On all these different signs that we're putting, can we put two little things at the bottom? One that has an arrow that says trailhead and is pointing in the direction of the trailhead and another arrow below that that says exit. So, you know, and all those different signs that are in people's front yards, that way you can't get lost. And, you know, if you haven't been there before, it would make it a lot easier to find those things. And, you know, ever since, you know, Teddy Roosevelt designated you a national treasure, you know, people want to go and, you know, visit and maybe they'll run into you on the trail, that kind of thing. So. Nothing. All right. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Good to hear from you again. Paula, who's next?
I don't have anyone else raising their hands. Oh, Brendan Dodge.
Brendan, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Thanks for giving me a moment of your time tonight. I I do sympathize with all the residents near the trailhead of Ferguson Canyon. Been a Cottonwood Heights resident for my entire life, so forty-five years. Very much frequent in Ferguson Canyons. I live just below there by Smith on Banga Boulevard. But I do have some concerns about these conversations. There's already no public parking zones by the rec center. My concern is kind of nobody wants people parked in front of their house or in front of their mailbox, their driveway. I respect that. I understand. But where do we limit that? How do we deal with the public funding for that? So my proposal is to make all streets in Cottonwood Heights no public parking, resident parking only. It seems like that's a fair and equitable way to deal with resident parking in a taxpayer-based system that pays for these roadways, pays for their maintenance and the snowplowing. So that's kind of my two cents. I think if it's a public road, we should have public parking. We see it all over with the rec center. On a busy Saturday, people don't park in the no parking areas. We just push the problem farther down the road. We lead people to make poor decisions where perhaps two cars fit in front of a residence, but they try to squeeze in three cars blocking someone's driveway or their mailbox and you know, ultimately, looking at the the pictures in the in the application, it doesn't seem like even the new parking lot, the overflow parking lot is going to be adequate for the current demands for the Ferguson Trailhead. So yes, I know there's a new parking lot going in, but you look at all those cars, they're not going to fit in that parking lot and they're certainly not going to fit there in five years. So my concern is where does it stop? How far do we keep pushing this no parking zone? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate your comments from your community down there. Paula? Who's next?
I don't have anyone here.
Well, let's wait just a minute.
Kelly Calder. I have Kelly Calder.
Kelly, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Kelly.
Okay, my name's Kelly Calder. I am the petitioner. I've talked to you all before and thank you for for hearing me again. There was one item that was brought up that was a concern in the review of the petition, I think by the police department it was brought up, and I've heard it brought up by others, and it relates to the Fourteenth Amendment, which is equal rights under the law. And the the question is, is that, you know, we have public roadways. Those public roadways are paid for and maintained by the the institutions where we all pay taxes and stuff. So everybody from the outset has a right to park there, and I understand that. And there was some question about that. That seems to be a little tacky for some people. So I did a little research and I found some information about that regarding the issue going way back. And there was a Supreme Court case in October of nineteen seventy-seven, and it was Arlington County Board versus Richards. And that case was where the county had set up residential permit parking that restricted commuters from parking there because it, you know, they had issues, kind of like the stuff we're going through. And it had gone to the case had gone to the Virginia Supreme Court where the Virginia Supreme Court. They they ruled in favor of the commuters. So this shows how, you know, this it's a tough question. And I understand the reason it was brought up originally because it's hard to know where 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 we sit with this. But that case was then taken by the Arlington County Board to the Supreme Court, the U.S. Supreme Court. And the U.S. Supreme Court overruled the Virginia Supreme Court and basically said that, you know, it's a it's a long document. I've read it. I can't do the legalese, but I read a kind of a little summary of what they said. And this is what they said. They said the U.S. Supreme Court disagreed with the Virginia Supreme Court ruling in October nineteen seventy-seven that the Constitution does not presume distinctions between residents and non-residents of a local neighborhood to be invidious. Okay, that's legalese. I didn't even know what invidious meant, so I had to look it up. It means burdensome or troubling. So it it says that that's not really a problem under the Constitution. They went on to say the Equal Protection Clause requires only that the distinction drawn by an ordinance like Arlington's and like what we're doing, rationally promote the regulation's objectives. Those objectives include protecting residences, I mean residents of the parking districts from unreasonable burdens in finding spaces near their homes and on and on and those kind of things. So I sent a copy of this to Mike Johnson and and to me, that seems to kind of summarize a ruling in in favor of, and I just wanted to put that forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate your research and sharing your information duly noted. Paula? Anyone else?
Sam Fisher.
Sam, welcome. Go ahead.
You and good evening. I appreciate the time. So I signed and continue to support the neighborhood petition. I'm one of the fifteen to restrict parking on the section of Ferguson Drive most directly impacted by parking congestion due to its proximity to Ferguson Canyon. I am not opposed to law-abiding citizens having access to the canyon for recreational purposes. Myself, my family, we enjoy hiking and and the purpose for the restriction of parking is, in my opinion, not to limit the use of this unique geological feature to neighborhood residents. There are two complicating factors which create an issue for residents. First, there is insufficient parking at the trailhead itself on Timberline for the number of visitors who frequent the location, particularly on warm sunny weekends. Second, it is more convenient for visitors to park along the residential street than to park in the designated overflow parking area on lower Prospector. As a result, our street is congested with parking virtually every Saturday and Sunday from May to September. As the petition outlines, this creates safety hazards, disturbances, and nuisances. My primary concern is safety. Prospector Drive is a steep hill which crests about a tenth of a mile south of Timberline. It is a dangerous section because of the lack of visibility as you approach the top of the curved hill. Visitors park end to end on both sides of the street, narrowing the road to less than two lanes, similar to David Hancock's comments. It will only be a matter of time before a serious accident, two vehicles or a vehicle and a pedestrian occur at the top of the hill. The likelihood increases as drivers looking for parking make U-turns or or parallel park, and it also increases when you consider postal and other delivery vehicles are forced to park and further restrict passage when they make the delivery. In addition to the safety concerns, I've experienced delays accessing my own driveway, my personal guests not being able to find a place to park near my home, lack of parking for my own vehicles when I'm working in the garage and don't have space, unleashed dogs defecating in my yard and on the sidewalk left behind by the owners, and unleashed dog running into my garage while I'm working, and trash left in my yard. I am regularly asked for directions from my house to the trailhead because of the lack of signage. I don't consider this to be a nuisance and I'm happy to help. I just wish those individuals would be directed to the designated parking area as opposed to congesting our street and creating these issues. I support the extension to my neighbors on Quicksilver or permitted parking where they reside and the concepts of additional direction and wayfinding. Thank you very much for your time.
Sam, appreciate your comments and the time you've taken to call us this evening. Paula, anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay, wait just a second. All right, if there's no one else, so and I'll consider the public hearing closed and you know, give the council an opportunity to comment if you would like. Any comments from the council? While the council's thinking, Mike, I have a quick question with the the theme somewhat of the theme of public comments regarding Quicksilver. Is that a separate issue since it's not an application? Or how is that looked at?
Yeah, I was looking into the ordinance and I think either the current petition would need to be amended or a new petition would need to be submitted, but it has to go through the same process. Has to have fifty-one percent of signatures in a signed petition. We need to verify that they're all property owners and and kind of submit the same type of application.
Would the petitioner Kelly have to agree to amend his petition?
Yeah, I think so because it to include it as part of this one and not a new application because we would need all the new signatures in our official application.
What about our thirty-day process, though?
It's a good question. I I don't know if we would need to do a new hearing at that point.
Well, maybe maybe Shane could give us some guidance, Shane.
Yeah, I've looked at the ordinance briefly just now. I I don't think there's a way to tack on to the existing petition. I think that it's going to be a separate issue and if the folks on the other on the other street want to provide a petition, why that'd be a separate process, but I don't think they can piggyback on to the current one.
So what what we're saying is that we're looking at this petition only then. Yeah, thank you.
I had a question. Yeah. Maybe Shane could weigh in a little bit about the constitutionality, what other precedents there is in areas that look like ours.
This is not something I've ever I've ever researched from the fellows talking about the U.S. Supreme Court case. The decision came down exactly as I thought it would. I think that this sort of parking permit program in stressed areas is is going to be constitutional for the reasons that he briefly explained.
Comments, questions, position? This will be on well, let me ask another question, but it'll be on our agenda for the December fifteenth meeting. What is the timeframe of implementation of this if it's approved? And I recently asked that question because of the status of the overflow lots construction.
Without stipulations or conditions, we would need to order signs and have those placed and then send out letters to notify the affected people of the new permit requirements and have them apply for and and get permits. So it it's pretty quick. You know, I I don't know if there's an option for the council to condition a decision on, you know, completion of the parking lot or anything like that. You know, that would be a little bit different.
Well, my question being is that during the construction of the lot, it's going to be closed. And you have no overflow parking. So I'm not taking a position, just raising the question. Should the implementation date be at the completion of the construction of the overflow parking so that, I mean, we have a fundamental responsibility to provide parking. Of course, we'll leave the ADA parking there if this was approved. Then the overflow lot, if it's under construction for I know Matt can tell it's ninety days and that starts next spring or summer. Do we have a fundamental responsibility to provide parking? And if we have no parking and don't have a lot, is that problematic?
Now, that was going to be one of the issues. I mean, timing wise, yes, it seems like you would want to do to be able to provide an alternative. This, I think the signage could could and probably should go ahead regardless. It it is, it can be confusing to get up there. I know it took me a few times getting up there when we were building the trailhead before I got used to it and could figure out exactly how I was getting there. But I, you know, I could certainly see, you know, see that point, Mayor, about having the parking being available. That should resolve itself at the end of this, at the end of the summer. I'm glad that research was done on the on the on the Supreme Court case. When I had read those arguments, I was going on there. These types of areas are fairly common throughout the country. And but 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 I agree, a public street should be a public place to park unless there's a compelling or there is a reasonable reason to to prohibit it. And we we found those in the past. Usually, you know, around high schools, around other public communities where it just doesn't make sense. And so you you do the restriction. So the the timing on it, I would question, but I think the the signage is something we we could get taken care of fairly quickly.
I'm personally supportive of the restricted parking. I think it's worked well around the rec center, even though we had one public comment said they thought that was problematic, but it works well because we've provided adequate parking next to the rec center. It just needs to push people to use it because they would park close to the pool. So they didn't have to walk over for the but there was adequate parking provided. So fundamentally, if we provide overflow parking, I feel supportive of of the restriction for resident only. Signage, I think, is fundamental. That should be a high priority. There was a question regarding a sticker on a window or somebody's somebody's coming from out of town, you're going to be there just a week. Why can't they have something they stick on a window? That makes sense to me as long as it's official. I'm I'm even supportive of that.
Yeah, I'm not sure when that got changed. That seems to be the way. We gave each resident certain number and that was who they 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 had to kind of keep track of them. That seems to make a lot more sense for the reasons cited. If you've got a service call or a plumber or someone comes to the house, you're not gonna wanna go down and fill out an application every time that happens. That that seems a little bit.
And they can be restricted.
So I mean, is that that's a question? We need to update that ordinance as well.
I I don't know what was done previously, but the ordinance right now requires you to register specific vehicles and then guest permits are only valid for up to forty-five days. I know in the past, each house was their their personal vehicles were licensed and then they were given a couple of extra tags for guests. We certainly could do that, but the code doesn't support that right now.
Christine, I'm sorry. We're taking time at your district and you're more sensitive than all of us. So comments, position?
No, I I appreciate yours and Councilmember Bracken's dialogue on timing. I think that's that's really important. I I do want to point out from an equity perspective, I was just doing some measuring on my computer while we were hearing comments and the overflow parking is just as a reminder is about point two miles from the trailhead. And and if you extend that from the 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 trailhead into the neighborhood, for instance, my house is one point four miles from Ferguson. So I'm not by implementing this, it's not, you know, it's 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 making it so all of us need to walk. It's not, it's I I don't, I don't, I don't, I understand equity issues and concerns, but to your point, Mayor, because we are offering this alternative with, I think, seventy parking stalls, it seems reasonable and rational. I guess that one question I'd have in terms of timing, Mike Johnson, is I know there was some parking that was going to be built on Big Cottonwood Canyon Road for the Forest Service to access Deff Smith Canyon from the north. And I know and I just measured the distance from Big Cottonwood Park and Ride to where I think that parking would be. That's about point three miles. Obviously, it's not great to walk along Big Cottonwood Canyon Road, but I just wanted to point out that it's probably not a great alternative. But I just bringing it up is something to think about. If if we had to approve it and we couldn't subject that approval to some timing in the future, that perhaps there are some other alternatives that we can look at.
Yeah, I don't know the timing on the the completion of that. I know it's in their their capital plan, the Forest Service capital plan. Along those lines, I'll just point this out so you have the information. The council is able without a petition to modify regulations of a parking area, basically by giving notice and holding a hearing. I suppose there's a scenario where during construction of that overflow lot, you could loosen the restrictions and then implement them again when the the lot is finished to avoid completely eliminating any parking in the area. So that is a mechanism in the ordinance. We'd have to explore the the implementation and So that is a mechanism in the ordinance. We'd have to explore the the implementation and and administration of that, but. There's an option there.
Tim, do you know the timing of the construction by chance? Know they just completing the EIS? This week or this month?
Yeah, Matt could address that, but he and I have talked. Oh, Matt, I'll let you share share that because we've been talking about the timing.
Uh, I've actually been emailing today. We still have not gotten the clearance on the environmental. It's been sitting in UDOT's hands now for about eleven days. We keep pushing them to get that information. Um, as soon as we have it, we can move forward to the next phase, which is hiring the. Firm for the design and once we have that, obviously, we'll go to construction. So we're still looking. At summer, um, getting started on the. Getting the started.
Matt, can you give us just a real rough estimate of what the construction time would be? Would it be?
This is probably, we will probably put a hundred twenty days on it. Um, doesn't mean they'll use it, but if you. It it's it's a balancing act. If you make it too tight, somebody can do it, but the price will go exponentially up. So anywhere from ninety to one twenty, but we we could probably look at an area of ninety. Um, it's a pretty straightforward parking area, so we'll go from there.
Okay, well, uh, a couple points in summary. Um. I I'm hearing signage is something, Tim, that we want to look at uh. And maybe have staff get back to us on what signage we can do. Uh, two, um. Clearly, we want to keep the ADA parking there on that site. So we do support the access. Um, uh, and and Mike, if it's if it's true. That we can modify restrictions uh for a period of time like during construction. If you're saying that's true, that's something we can consider.
Yeah, I I think so. It it just says the city council may modify the rules, regulations and restrictions governing an existing permit parking area. Uh, and then, you know, but basically by giving notice and holding a hearing.
And the the next item on Quicksilver, uh, you know, uh, with Mr. Hancock and others. That encourage you to uh. Go ahead and as Shane has suggested, uh. By your own application and we'll give it its consideration just like this. They make they make some good points. Counsel, uh, is this something we can support to move forward at our next meeting? Anyone opposed to that happening?
My 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 other concern was the point that you had made with the ordinance not seeming to work the way. It makes sense. I would, I honestly, I'd rather fix the ordinance. And and then and then actually get it implemented rather than kind of. I don't know if that's something Mike can put together in two weeks. But um, yeah, I mean, the I think the points are valid about, well, you're not open on the weekends. What if I've got? You know, my heater goes out and I need to have the guys over there and the only place they can. I mean, I don't know if someone's going to call the police on him, but you know, if that were to occur, that kind of be that kind of becomes the issue, so. Um.
No, I agree. I'd I'd like that dealt with at the right time, yeah, too, yeah.
Let me just comment, we're we're still going to need to consider this in the thirty days based on the ordinance, so we would have to consider this application. The going through the process of of modifying the ordinance obviously would take longer than the. Timeframe, so you'd have to make a decision. We could still move forward. On modifying the ordinance, it'd just take a little bit of time. I believe it would have to go to plant, uh, maybe not the planning commission, Mike.
I don't think so. It's not a land use.
So it it's just something of getting it together and getting the notice and. Having Shane review it, get the notice in and then bringing it to the council, but that's going to take more time than a decision. Next week or two weeks.
But then we can approve it. With stipulations that these things will happen. Is that right?
I I I think you can approve it with stipulations. Um. Uh, when you when you consider this on the fifteenth, we can look into that between now and then and make sure. We're comfortable with that. We'll get with Shane and Mike and. And make sure that uh. What our recommendation is related to this. That we're comfortable under the provisions of the ordinance.
Yeah, and we we can work through a few of those uh. Specific items through the next couple of weeks and preparing it for the council on the fifteenth.
Yeah, and and one point, just simply because it was brought up. Um, we actually, um, the process around the rec center, which is the most recent version of something like this, we did actually. Was not a resi- it ended up not being a residential parking permit, which is was the original genesis of the request. Um, that actually is just a flat out. No parking. From during certain hours and during certain a certain time of year. And that seems to to be working. That's not dissimilar to what is around. For example, the high school, which it is, if it's a school day and these hours, it's no parking, but other than that, you're fine. I don't know if that was something that the residents had considered, but um. Anyway, there there is that distinction between a residential parking permit where to be legal, you need to have some sort of indicator that you're supposed to be there. As opposed to just a timed or regulated no parking area where it's clear you either are supposed to be there or you're not.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Could it be voted on and with the caveat that it didn't kick in until that parking is provided?
It could, and that's what I was referring to, but with Mike's comment back that you can vote on and approve it and establish it. Then, once construction starts for ninety days, by our administrative direction, we can loosen. Enforcement, I guess, Mike, that's what we're saying for that ninety day period, so. Because we don't know when that construction is going to be.
Mayor, that that's my concern. Timing is everything because if we close that down completely below. And if we already enact our ADA up above, then we're going to have a real problem.
Yeah.
If it's the spring and summer really is what we're dealing with right now, which is the most crucial, I think. I know falls falls popular as well, but uh if we're lucky, we can have this lower part, I think, done by fall. Is that right, Matt? Oh, I don't know if Matt's there.
No, he's here, but I think he said that it would be late next spring when we would start construction, be done by.
Ninety to ninety to one twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, so I'm the definitive end time on that is hard to predict right now. Honestly, it is.
But if we're able to get what we. I I believe what we would like, which is also a. Canine oriented area. That would alleviate or could possibly alleviate some of the pressure at the trailhead itself because. Those people people may just opt to stay. In that area rather than taking the the dogs off leash up the canyon. Um, but that might be something to look at to see whether. It's. Able to be adopted uh pending completion of the uh other. Uh, parking lot.
Councilman Michael, now this is your district and therefore. What's your feelings on timing? Would your preference be representing that group? That we move ahead and get it adopted? And then uh loosen it during construction period? And let the community be aware of that or hold off and implement it after construction?
Um, I think my preference would be to vote and. If successful, implement and then and then loosen the restrictions uh to base on the construction. And I also would. Consider, I think, one of the gentlemen who presented commented that the peak times of the. Of Ferguson are from May to September, and I'm just wondering if we couldn't um shoot for that construction closer to the next fall. As an option, I I don't know if that's better or worse, but maybe limiting. Trying to do the construction when less people are using it, so we don't have that equity issue. And then I would also say. That I think when we, if we went forward with uh approval and loosening it, we should also can give some consideration to those. Those areas along Prospector where it is steep and I too have been nervous um about, you know, safety. Really thinking about, are there certain? Areas that we should keep off, you know, off limits to parking during that period? Just another thought.
Yep, appreciate that, and that's uh with uh Quicksilver Drive and stuff like that with additional application. Okay, uh, I I feel the same as Christine just said. I would I would support moving ahead with uh a vote in our next meeting. Uh, with an understanding, we're going to work on the actual ordinance to, Scott was talking about. Changing how we uh approve vehicles by something that the resident can just put on a window. Um, and we'll communicate back to those residents on Quicksilver. And look at loosening the restrictions, again, letting the community know. During that construction period, whenever that. Is yet to be determined, um, as we still got to go through the design phase and everything else. Any last comments? Are you done? That's uh, Mike, is that enough direction?
Yeah, uh, Tim and I will meet and and discuss and we'll be ready in two weeks.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. Uh. We do have two action items before you on your uh. Agenda tonight. Uh, the first item is uh. Ordinance uh three fifty, adopting an annual meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one. Tim, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, this is a requirement of state law that we adopt a meeting schedule um for the upcoming year. That's what this proposal is. It includes uh meetings of the city council, planning commission and other. Uh, committees. And we're recommending approval of it. Shane has prepared uh the resolution on it and that's our recommendation.
Any comments or questions regarding uh? This resolution? Hearing that, I'd obtain a motion for approval.
Move that we approve ordinance three fifty.
This been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bruce. By a hair. Any final comments? Now, a call for the vote? Councilmember Michael?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item of business is Resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-five. Approving entry into a consulting agreement with uh Bowen Collins and Associates for Stormwater Utility and. Program Development Analysis, I guess. Uh, this is a forty thousand dollar contract. It's paid for out of our impact fees. Um, to give us more information as we research. Issues related around stormwater fees. Any, well, uh, Matt, you want to introduce that? Did I?
Mayor, I think I think you did an excellent job, Mayor. That's yeah, it's just uh. It's to help develop the program so that there's something for you as a council as well as the residents. To comment on, and we have something going forward and if and when we do decide to adopt a stormwater user fee.
Thank you. Any final comments or questions from the council?
Uh, this is Councilmember Michael. I'm going to recuse myself on this vote. I don't. Know that it's necessary, but um my brother-in-law was a partner at Bowen and Collins and I believe still works there and. So in the interest of being transparent, I'll just recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you for uh volunteering that information. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions?
No, my my, I wasn't going to make a comment earlier. For those who may be watching, Chris. Council Councilmember Mike and myself are not next to each other. She's actually there. I'm just virtually there. But all the way to motion on this action item with. Intensity.
All right, so it's been moved by Councilmember Bracken.
Oh, did I do that?
Yeah, I thought that's what I just heard you say.
Well, I said I had to wait one, but I I will have.
Oh, I thought you said I'd move.
I'll prove, I'll move that we approve uh the motion. It would be nice to have something concrete to look at.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Ah, seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further comments or uh? Questions? Hearing that, I'd call for the vote. Uh, the Councilor Peterson.
Oh, you did that backwards, Doug.
You are muted.
You're still backwards.
He's still back, you you now you're mute. There you go.
Yes.
Ah.
Sorry.
Councilmember says yes.
Never have so many waited for so long over one syllable.
Councilmember Bracken?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce?
Yes.
And Councilman Michael abstains and uh I will vote yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Uh, one other uh brief item of business, that's our consent calendar items, which is the. Workstation Business Meeting minutes of November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion to approve those?
I move that we approve those.
This moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Michael. I'm just go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that it was unanimously approved. Okay, that's the end of our uh business meeting tonight. Any? Final comments or questions? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce who adjourned. We have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Michael. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe and we'll talk to you soon.
Night.
Good night.